March 22nd, 2023, meeting of the Union Township Zoning Commission is now called to order at seven PM. If you'd all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is a roll call. Mr. McCormick?
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Outridge?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we're all here.
Forum established. So, next order of business is the minutes that were circulated. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
We've regularly made a seconded motion to approve the minutes from our Union Township Zoning Commission meeting from February 22nd, 2023.
And we should note that these are the updated minutes that were sent out.
I did put a copy of the updated minutes up there for you.
Yes.
That's what that is.
We've regularly made a seconded motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion? No discussion. Mr. McCormick, if you'd call a roll?
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Outridge?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Minutes approved. Do we have any old business to come before the commission? Hearing no old business. Just briefly before we begin, for those of you who are new to the zoning commission process, it's our job to make a recommendation on pending zoning case to the Union Township trustees. The trustees will then hear the case at their next meeting, and they make the final decision. So, we have one new case. This is case number 323Z, a zone map amendment from R2 to PD Plan Development. Mr. McCormick, if you have a case summary for us, please?
Yes. So, the applicants apply for a zone map amendment requesting that three parcels, which are listed on this slide and under the location item of the staff report, be rezoned to, from single-family detached structure residential R2 to Plan Development. The total acreage of the request is 12.374 acres. The addresses for the site are 1037 on State Route 74, 1055, and 1065, Old State Route 74. Location, which is owned by the Holman Brothers Real Estate LLC and Cowboy Properties LLC, is on the south side of Old 74, as indicated here in the slide, and is between the intersections of Teal Town and Old 74 and Schoolhouse Road and Old 74. All three of the properties, as I mentioned before, are zone R2 to the north, to the northeast and northwest. The properties are zoned R2, the adjoining properties, with the exception of one area to the north, it's zone PD. To the west, the south, and the east, the adjoining properties are zone PD, and in fact, the Holman Brothers own the parcel that wraps around the majority of the bigger parcel there in the middle, essentially of that 12-acre area, and that was zone PD in 2017, early 2017, for the growth and expansion of the Holman Brothers, Holman Motors Automotive and RV Sales and Service Facility area, and that was done specifically to allow gravel storage lot with security fencing and lighting, which at that time appeared to be consistent with the adjoining Holman property, according to the staff report that I looked at. This is the aerial view with the maintenance of the roads shown. Old 74 is a county-maintained road. You can see the site highlighted here, and you can note that some of the site is already under use for the intended purpose of existing gravel storage lot. What happened is the applicants came in for approval for some grading and stormwater improvements, and as we were reviewing that and trying to make a determination as to, you know, whether or not the permit was necessary for those purposes, we found that there was already an existing use on this site, and it was not rezoned for the use that it was being used for at that time. So, we had a compliance issue, and we directed the applicants to the rezone process to try to address it through that method, as one of the only methods to address it. This is the oblique imagery, obviously older than the aerial that you see there from 2022. Is this oblique? I don't know the exact date, but it's obviously older. And this is the current aerial blown up with the two-foot contours. I'm gonna pause there and talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan relationship. So, the Horizon 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan indicates that the proposal is located within the Old State Route 74, Summerside, Willowville corridor. The plan acknowledges that this area of the township is suitable for limited commercial expansion or redevelopment, provided that smaller fragmented parcels are consolidated under a cohesive development plan, limited coordinated access, land use controls, et cetera. The plan also identifies that the Plan Development District is the precise mechanism to achieve planning goals and to convert residential properties to commercial in this area of the township. Additionally, the plan indicates that the southern portion of the corridor remains desirable for higher intensity commercial development, similar to the adjoining Holman Motors PD areas already established to the south, east, and west of the subject parcels. Old 74 is a minor arterial two-lane roadway with a left-turn lane in the center, with a traffic volume in this area of approximately 10,836 average daily trips. New commercial developments, along with increased adjacent residential growth and proposed network enhancement, have positively impacted the character of the corridor focus area since the formulation of the last plan. However, limited pedestrian connectivity has been established, therefore, for new development or redeveloping properties that are located within 200 feet of an existing sidewalk, new sidewalks are required to be installed along a project's road frontage. In this instance, the proposed development is more than 200 feet from an existing sidewalk on the south side of the road. There are, however, sidewalks on the north side of Old 74, State Route 74, in the area of this project. Among other things, the 2030 Union Township Comprehensive Land Use Plan calls for shared driveway configurations wherever practical, and for site development to be conducted in a manner that focuses on maximizing land use efficiency within field development strategies for underutilized properties. For commercial development redevelopment, the use of traditional building materials and deployment of adequate vegetative buffering and landscaping strategies along shared property lines, and the addition of landscaping enhancements along the corridor frontage is required. Additionally, the plan indicates that new developments and expansion efforts along the corridor must implement noise and/or light pollution reduction strategies wherever practical. Move forward into the zoning resolution section of the staff report. We made reference to sections 680 through 684, and also to section 687 with regard to the township resolution. 680 sets forth the purpose of the PD, providing for business or mixed business residential developments in appropriate locations in relation to existing potential and existing potential land uses, and attracting and providing an attractive setting for those developments. 681 acknowledges that the conflict arising between the PD regulations or an approved PD plan or other sections of this resolution, PD regulations and approved plan will prevail. Section 682, land use for any property in the PD district shall be consistent with the use, design, and details contained in the approved PD plan. Other applicable regulations for the resolution, such as nuisance regulations, shall apply pursuant to an approved plan. Allowed uses in the PD district may include those stated in the B1 and M1 districts, or substantially similar uses as determined by the zoning commissioner or board of trustees. Section 683, property owner may submit an application for zone change to PD. That's setting forth what the process is. Section 684, all site plans shall contain the elements stated in section 1131. So, in addition to what's in these sections in 684, you have what's alluded to in section 1131 for site plan review, and will include the following items, and those include what you see there listed, building lot, area coverage, residential density, detailed description of the site materials, landscaping, and so forth. Supplemental provisions are provided in 687 on page four. In terms of the proposed project, again, here is the aerial for the site. The site is outlined. The three parcels are outlined here on the perimeter. This is the one of the two pages of the plan that indicate the affected area. This is the proposed plan, which also shows the proposed landscaped areas, which are consisting of berms, which are of an unknown height at this point, and are providing, Green Giant are providing to be planted every four feet, and four feet high, four foot high minimum, sorry, not every four feet planted. I think it's every 10 feet. Yes, every 10 feet, which is a little different than the mounds that are already there existing from the prior plantings, where they're, they look like they're stagger plantings. The landscaping plan is something that's, I'm gonna come back to here in a moment, as far as the staff proposed modifications. In terms of the staff review, the applicants acquired these three subject parcels in February, from February of 2017 to October of 2021. In February of 2017, Union Township rezoned the adjoining parcel of Plan Development. That's that parcel that wraps around the entire bigger parcel. It's kind of has like a triangular middle, if you will, point, and that was for the purpose of the gravel storage lot with security fencing and lighting installed on the property. The current proposed plan is for similar uses, only without the lighting. Made reference there to the applicant statements, plans, and other application closures for more information regarding the application request at that point. I did look up if there was any mention of a variance for the gravel parking from the prior staff report. There was not. I think that at the time of the request, since the adjoining property was gravel, and some of that property had been gravelled for such a length of time, there was not an acknowledgement that a variance was needed. So, I did not put a variance was needed in this particular instance either, either even though, according to Article 8, that would be something that we would normally acknowledge as part of the process for someone who is proposing a gravel storage area. Just kind of an FYI, in accordance with 801, number five. The applicant's proposal appears to meet the objectives of the Horizon 2030 Union Township Conference Plans, future land use policies and recommendations of the Old State Route 74, Summerside, Willowville corridor. The proposal would result in the consolidation of fragmented and underutilized parcels while establishing a high-density commercial use along State Route, Old State Route 74, what that should say. Vegetative buffering provided on the plan would result in enhancement of the overall condition of the site, and recent stormwater improvements have been made, and compliance is being and would be addressed through the county's review process. Additionally, the applicants would meet or exceed all the minimum setbacks for the proposed uses. The uses are consistent with the Holman Motors PDs located to the east, west, and south of the subject property. And as mentioned earlier in the report, the utilization of the Plan Development District is a precise mechanism to achieve planning goals and to convert residential properties to commercial in this area of the township. And at present, there are current remaining technical questions and issues are set forth in the recommended modification section of this report. In terms of the action required, in sections 680 to 687, the zoning commission's role in this process, as mentioned earlier, is to either enter a motion to recommend approval, approval with modifications, or deny all the applicant's requests to rezone the property as submitted to the trustees. The trustees would review this case ultimately at their April 11th, 2023 meeting, which is at 6:00 PM in this room. Before I go over the recommended modifications, I'll go through the slides from the staff inspection. This slide here is looking northwest from the site. At the most northerly portion of that site from Old 74, the site would be essentially behind you. This is if you're looking towards the property from south to southwest. You can see the fencing in the background that's along that northwesterly piece. This is looking north across Old 74, what's there. This is looking southeast from that same area. This is, as you're traveling southeast along Old 74, and you're looking towards the site. This is looking southwest towards the site, part of the site. This is looking southwest towards part of the site. This is the existing vegetation that's been planted. That's looking a little more to the southwest. And this is looking in the area, I believe, where the letter that we received, or the email that we received today, where that area was referring to from 2017, where there was fencing put in, but not landscaping along Old 74. I don't think either one of those houses are the house that was involved in that particular email, but it's a house that's near these homes, and these are across Old 74 from that existing parking area. This is actually on the interior of the site, looking at the existing parking area, looking northwest, and that's really kind of what it looks like in the central portion of that triangular area that I mentioned earlier, that point. This is looking northeast from the rear of the Old 74 property towards the residential properties. It's looking a little bit more to the left of the previous picture, north to northeast. This is if you travel a little more west of the site, looking north. You can see the back of the residential properties where the fencing has been installed. This is looking a bit more to the west. You can actually see the western boundary there, which is demarcated by the block wall essentially that's there, with some landscaping. And this is the parcel that would have been rezoned in 2017, for clarity, but because we don't have a final landscaping plan from 2017, from that effort we have asked for as part of the modifications, and I'm gonna get to in a minute, for the final landscaping plan to include, if approved, the 2017 landscaped area as well in its entirety, since we never got a final plan for that, that we could find. This is looking west towards that Jamestown Village area, I believe is what it's called. You can see the existing wall and the landscaping there. And this is looking southeast from that western property line. Again, this is not part of the rezone, but this is part of that area that's on the west property line abutting the residential area. This is looking northwest from that western property line. So, the recommended modifications that are left, the first one's a pretty standard one. The applicants will need to address any concerns that may come up from the county engineer, county water, sewer district, fire department, and other regulatory agencies having jurisdiction over the proposed development prior to any township action. The applicants will need to provide additional details for proposed landscaping and acknowledge and perhaps enhance or replace plantings where they have died or perhaps not been planted, particularly along the western property line of previously approved PD, and between the proposed and new parking areas and adjacent residential areas in the road. All landscaping buffers should be marked as preservation areas, and any vegetation areas should be repaired, supplemented, or replaced. This is designed to be addressed administratively by staff. There are no signs proposed at this time, and if there is signage proposed at a later point in time, it would be limited to 10-foot signage that are mining style, and that would be subject to administrative review and approval. There's no lighting proposed at this time, and however, all lighting, if would be needed in the future, would need to be downward directed enough sufficient intensity only to eliminate without projecting onto adjoining residential property, and we would need detailed specs for that. We're usually looking at about a half-foot can or less, which is consistent with residential lighting. And then ultimately, a new survey and legal description of all consolidated acreage would need to be provided prior to any final action, and this is an item that could also be addressed administratively by staff. One final point. We had 19 letters sent out. We had one email received today that I forwarded to you, and I also printed out for you to read here this evening, and we had no letters returned to date. Any questions for me?
Any members of the commission have any questions?
No.
No.
I do not.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Is the applicant or their representative here to speak? Please step forward.
Mr. Chair, I'm Mr. Ford.
If you introduce yourself, please.
My name's Tom Mooney, project manager for Holman Brothers, and we, Mark had called me earlier today and gone over most of every, well, actually everything. He just hung over with you. We do not have a problem with any of the recommendations that the staff has made, and we're willing to work with you. Do you have any questions of us? Mr. Holman's here as well.
I've got a quick question. It appears you're not, on the landscaping plan, you're not moving down all the way into the, into two of the parcels that you're asking to be rezoned. Or what are your plans? You're only partially going down and then creating a landscape boundary, closing off some of your property. I was curious, are you planning to develop that further?
We don't have any plans right now to do that, so we were leaving those plantings, the older ones with the taller trees, is the ones you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna leave those in path.
Okay, very nice. The, I noticed a demarcation. Is there already a five-foot mound around where it's already been put in place?
Partially.
Okay.
There, to the left, I guess, is the, it's probably a three-to-four-foot mound with plantings on it already, and I thought we had put them five feet apart. You say they were 10?
On the new, on the new plan, I think it says 10.
On the new plan, they were staggered, I think. But, so on the new plan, that mound has not been put in yet, the darker line to the west.
Okay.
But it will be. We do have our grading plan already approved through the county, so.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Any additional speaking on behalf of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Mooney. Now, would anyone like to speak who's got questions for the applicant or would like to speak against the proposed change? Please step forward.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jonna Chadwell. Can I ask some questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Who owns the white fence that's around the perimeter right now?
We do.
Holman owns that, okay. How many acres does Holman currently have? 16?
Yes, close to 60, I think, 8.
Are there any plans for the, right now, the main entrance is on Elook Road. Are there any plans for that entrance to be changed to Old 74?
There already is an entrance on Old 74.
There's a small one there, yes. Is that gonna become the main entrance?
We want to see how the, the project, the roads continue. Kind of waiting to see what happens there. Yes, that is, we are considering that.
I guess one of my main concerns is that our property values are gonna go down with more commercial properties around us. I know currently there are only three parcels that they're requesting, but I feel that, and I think it was kind of stated, that they're eventually gonna try to take the other parcels on Old 74. Is that in the plans?
We would like to own Old 74, yeah.
Okay. I know they talked about vegetative buffering, so that would be between Old 74 and your fencing area. Where would the vegetative buffering be?
It'd be behind the fence.
Behind your fence. So, we would see a fence from Old 74.
And we'll also see tall trees behind it.
I know Holman makes money for the county, and we're just property owners, but these are homes that are gonna be effective, you know, with this new plan. It's not just a house, they're homes. I don't know, how many acres does Holman need? How much inventory do they need? That's my final question. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you point out where your house is?
I'm the second house in on Bridlewood.
Oh, second house. You're over on the other side of the street on Bridlewood? Okay.
Yeah, 4463 Bridlewood.
Right.
Could you bring up a, the... Could you bring up a, the, the map of focus districts? I wanted to make sure everybody was aware where the Old Seventy-Four, Willoughby Focus District actually was. Most, everything that they're requesting to be modified, plus all of the adjacent residential properties, are within the Somerville-Willoughby Focus area, which is all designated for growth, harmonious growth between business and residential, and even some high intensity, this is what we call a low intensity, but this, this whole area is slated for business growth, and even the residential properties that are adjacent to this are included in that zone. I don't think your property in Bridalwood is, but just one, one property in on Bridal, off of Old Seventy-Four on your side is enclosed in the, in the district, just to be, just make sure everybody's aware where the development district is, and that what they're proposing is all well within the, the focus district and, and within the guidelines of our 2030 development plan.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chadwell. He'll be bringing it up in a minute, I can further clarify that.
So it's this area right here that we're talking about?
Could you zoom in a little bit?
Yes.
Yeah, all of the blue area is the Willoughby Summerside Development Focus area, and you can see it, it even extends to the other side of Seventy-Four. The parcels that they're proposing, Mr. McCormick is outlining, are right in the center of that area, the development district, and all of the residential properties are around it, and what our plans call for, both our zoning development plan, as well as our 2030 plan, call for development, combined commercial residential development with proper buffering between residential and commercial, and what we're looking at tonight is a proposal for buffering on those, between those areas, and we will discuss the buffering in greater detail. But this is, what's being proposed is well within the guidelines of that focus district. Now, the focus district has been in place for quite some time, the area in white is not considered currently focus district or up for development, but everything in the blue is intended to be a combined marriage between residential and commercial development. And again, wherever there's a residential property, we look for low-density commercial development, and this would be considered a low-density, low-activity, non, very low-traffic or activity, just so everybody's aware. So if you, if you recognize your property there, and it's in the blue, then you're in the, in the development focus district. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Before we close the public portion, do any members of the commission have any questions for the applicant or anyone else present?
I do have one.
Yes.
For the, in 2017, well, actually in 2020, when you required parcel forty-one thirty-one, it's the lower one, the triangle-shaped one, and you have indicated here as gravel parking, why wasn't a rezoning request to business, for business use done at that time before you had RVs put on that parcel?
No, we decided after we bought the property, we started with gravel, and it was gravelled on the other side of that, and we started to clear that property and gravel it at that point, and we wanted to bring it into this plan development, but we got ahead of ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, we will close the portion of our meeting that has public comment, so everyone's free to stay and observe the rest of the proceedings, but unless we have additional questions, there won't be further public comment, and we'll open up a comment on this issue among ourselves. Does anyone like to comment on the current proposal?
I think what they're proposing is well within the guidelines of the, both the 2030 Horizon Plan as well as our zoning resolution. We need to focus on the landscaping, I believe, and in the recommendations from Mr. McCormick's group, they have a fairly strong recommendation here for landscaping, not only buffering between the residential, but getting the rest of the PD up to speed, and I think that's important, getting the entire PD brought into, into.
Compliance.
Compliance with the, correct, with the, with the current resolution. So that's what I'd be interested in, is making sure that we see landscaping even on the existing PD where there is no entrance or driveway, where there's just road frontage, there's a call for, let's see. Ten-foot landscape buffer yard along any public right-of-way or private street easement, continuous three-foot grass or other plant-covered berm, or continuous row of three-foot tall planting shrubs, those types of things that Mr. McCormick's group could administratively manage. Twenty-foot landscape buffer along any adjoining residential zones, and I believe, although I'm not seeing the twenty on the map, I'd like to see the twenty feet on the map, so, and that would be part of coming into compliance with section six eighty-four dash three with the, with the landscaping requirements. But other than that, I believe that, and two, what's interesting, and I think to the resident's benefit, is they're, at this time, they're not pursuing any change or growth down into the legs of the two properties that they've added on that are directly adjacent to the, to the other properties. They're putting a close-off barrier of vegetation there to block any, and I think that's a very considerate move. So I, I don't have any issues with the development, but I do want to see the buffering around the entire PD plan brought into, into compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Wang?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Shannon? Mr. Outridge?
I'm in agreement with everything that was said. I do know with E-Look becoming, with the Gleness DeOverpass project, that they do plan on cul-de-sac in E-Look Lane, so I think that question regarding access in future planning purposes to your site, I think is important, particularly for parcel forty-one thirty-one oh four B, oh, let's see, one eight, the one furthest to the right of the leg. I see on the plan here that it has that marked for woods, so that's good, because I think the main access at that point would be the parcel two to the right of that, which is gravel existing currently. I could see then possibly increasing traffic and concentrating a lot more activity in that spot, should that cul-de-sac project, once that is complete. I do like that the, the activity is, like as you guys had said, away from the leg, so that's good. I do wish that this was rezoned sooner, particularly for tax benefits. Yeah, they're claiming residential, currently right now, tax benefits and a non-business tax credit, particularly on that parcel that's triangular, and that shouldn't be, they have our meters.
There is a business credit.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Outridge. Well, if there's no further comment, then we will begin work on a motion.
Yeah, and I was looking over the recommendations, the recommended modifications from Mr. McCormick's group is, it does cover the, you know, the applicants would need to provide additional details for the proposed landscaping plan and acknowledge and perhaps enhance or replace plantings, particularly along the western property line of previously approved PD, and between proposed new parking areas and the adjacent residential areas in the road. All landscaping buffers should be marked as preservation areas, and any vegetation disturbed should be repaired, supplemented, or replaced. This is an item that can be addressed administratively by staff, and, and I agree with that. This, this looks at the entire PD and bringing not only the new aspects of it up to landscaping spec, but all of the PD, and there's a lot of areas that could be, could be done. And two, the option for either going with, leaving existing landscaping in place, I know there's some, do you have the GIS over aerial view of the, of the property, Mr. McCormick?
Just here. You want me to zoom out more?
Uh, no, zoom, zoom in closer to where we can see any existing vegetation, okay.
Yeah, that most, yeah, it's here, right, those are the two buffers they put in.
Oh, and there's, and they're not developing in that area anyway?
All of the triangle, it used to be the trees that the woman that sent the email was talking about that got wiped out. That was all treed in before.
All right. Okay, so when you, well, Mr. Holman, when you folks work together, you could decide, there's options that are listed out as alternatives for buffering, and you've already got the mound, the mound needs to be five feet, and then plantings on top of that, or you could do other types, but it has to be twenty feet, and the, the updated landscaping map should show that there's a twenty-foot buffer to all adjacent residential properties. And that would be, that would fall into the, exactly what was listed in the recommendations, that's part of the code, so. I, I think the recommendations, as I see them here, cover us pretty well, unless anybody has any other requirements.
No, I agree.
And the county engineer's office, too, will be involved in access points. I know you'll have to work with the county for access, and our team will be working with you on that as well. I'm sorry, now I am really done.
All right, we will formulate a motion.
Do you want to put one together, or you want me to do it, or?
If you wouldn't mind collaborating.
Sure.
If you give us a minute, we'll.
So as we go down through this.
Right.
So the, the application is consistent with the land use plan, the 2030 land use plan, but it does not meet all of the requirements, and that's what the modification's for. And our recommendation is approved contingent upon adherence. I think it is important to list under findings of fact, or a summary. Okay, you've got, yeah, and, and it is important to note that all subject properties and adjacent residential properties are within the focus area, the Summerside-Willoughby Mixed Use Corridor. And that we are paying special attention to the, to the landscaping requirements. I think that covers it.
Okay, and then modifications?
The modifications, I would read them, and I would, I would read the modifications, and I would come directly from Mr. McCormick's report.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Because I think they're, they're well-written, and, and they are very comprehensive. This covers the access points, this, this covers the landscaping, the signage plan, the lighting, and the new survey requirement. So it's, I think that combining the template and the recommendations from Mr. McCormick and his staff are appropriate.
Yeah. As the case was presented, that's where I feel the commission was going, so, okay, good.
Cool.
Appreciate it. Okay, in regards to case three twenty-three Z, applicant Holman Motors, Holman Brothers Real Estate LLC and Cowboy Properties LLC, the zoning commission finds that the submitted PD application zone request is consistent with the Horizon 2030 land use plan, but does not meet all the planned development application requirements of a PD district plan. Therefore, this commission recommends the submitted plan be approved contingent upon adherence to the noted modifications as specified in this motion. All required supplemental information and plan modifications must be completed and submitted to Planning Director no later than one week prior to the trustees' hearing of this case. Findings of facts. Subject parcels are located in the Summerside-Willoughby Mixed Use Corridor, which is a very diverse area that includes high-intensity commercial operations, general commercial trade services, professional offices, and residential neighborhoods. Special care must be exercised when considering residential to commercial conversions when adjacent to existing residential areas. Furthermore, there must be compliance with the Union Township zoning department's recommended modifications, which I will read now. Number one, the applicants would need to address any concerns of the county engineer, Claremont County Water and Sewer District, Claremont County Building Department, the Union Township Fire Department, and/or other regulatory agencies having jurisdiction over the proposed development prior to any final township action. Number two, the applicants would need to provide additional details for the proposed landscaping plan and acknowledge and perhaps enhance and/or replace plantings, particularly along the western property line of the previously approved PD, and between the proposed slash new parking areas and the adjacent residential areas and the road. All landscaping buffers should be marked as preservation areas, and any vegetation disturbed should be repaired, supplemented, or replaced. This is an item that can be addressed administratively by staff. Number three, a signage plan would ultimately need to be submitted, if applicable. All freestanding signage should be limited to monument signage capped at a height of no more than ten feet from the finished grade, subject to administrative review and approval. There is no lighting proposed at this time, however, all lighting, if needed in the future, would need to be downward directed and of sufficient intensity to illuminate without projecting onto the adjoining residential property. Details slash specs of proposed lighting would be necessary, however, this is an item that could slash would be addressed administratively by staff. Number five, ultimately, a new survey and legal description of all consolidated acreage would need to be provided prior to any final action. This is an item that can be addressed administratively by staff. That concludes my motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Regularly made and seconded motion, any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, Mr. McCormick, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Outridge?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Wang?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. Motion carries. And just for everyone's edification, Mr. McCormick, if you would let everyone know when this case is to be addressed by the trustees?
The trustees will review this case on Tuesday, April eleventh, at six p.m. in this room.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. So that concludes that case. Any new business to come before the commission?
No, I had put some placeholder here for administrative, but I don't have anything prepared. I'm still trading emails with the attorneys on, on things regarding potential ordinance amendments. And I'm still working on trying to get a group meeting with the trustees, they have these working meetings every other month. The one for April was already set aside for economic development, so I'm hoping that maybe one of the next two, which would be June and August, we might be able to set together a group meeting, because it seems like that's the most likely scenario of getting everybody together.
Well, as there's no additional business, do I have a motion to adjourn? I made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Everybody calm down. I heard, I heard Mr. Lewis first.
I was louder.
I've a regularly made and seconded motion to adjourn, Mr. McCormick, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Outridge?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Wang?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. We are adjourned at seven fifty-five p.m. Thank you.